I'd like to call the September 7th, 2017, meeting to order, please. And just to note, the next meeting will be on September 19th. September 19th. That's a deviation from our regular schedule. Bishop Williams, will you please lead us in a flag salute? And if you could remain standing for some moments of silence. The first moment of silence this evening is for Rita Sarice. And Rita Sarice, the executive secretary for Mr. Tom Scott, who is superintendent of Buildings and Grounds. Mrs. Sarice was known throughout Middletown as an excellent gardener and a very accomplished cook. She enjoyed family. She enjoyed doing things for the community. And she was very active in church activities. The next moment of silence this evening is Francesca. Francesca Siscozider. And Mrs. Zider, an English teacher at Middletown High School for many years, and I worked with Mrs. Zider. Served on numerous curriculum committees. She was known as a very hard worker. Never a clock watcher. She used to say many hours after school to help students. She served the Middletown community. She was a member of the Catholic Daughters of America and the Retired Teachers Association. The next moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Thomas Darcy. And Mr. Thomas Darcy, the brother of a longtime teacher in the district, Pat Darcy, who taught in this district for over forty years, I believe, close to forty-five years. Tom, a Middletown person, graduated Middletown High School. Excelled in various aspects of sports and curriculum. He graduated New York, he graduated New York University Law School in 1967. And he practiced law for over thirty years. And for ten years, he was justice of the peace in Monhope. He was known as a kind of person, I never heard Tom get mad, as a very reasonable, rational individual. Involved in numerous community activities and did a great deal of pro bono work. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention one of our former students in the district, Corey White Jr., who met an unfortunate passing, an unfortunate passing. And as Bishop Williams says, "If you know something, say something." And finally, for all the victims of the hurricanes, Harvey and Irma, please remember all these people in your thoughts and prayers. Mrs. Tobiasin, could you please read the mission of the enlarged city school district?
The mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. We strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Tobiasin. May we have a roll call, Ms. Clark?
Here.
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 Thank you very much, Mrs. Clark. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Motion unanimously passed. We had a approval special minutes, August 17th, 2017.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to approve the special meeting, the board retreat minutes of October, of August 31st, 2017.
So moved.
Bishop Williams, Mrs. Knapp, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously passed, thank you. We have some special recognitions this evening. I don't see, however, Mr. Libsy, he may be here later, and why, right on, right on schedule. Art and Jennifer, how did you know that I just called for your, for the special recognition? Well, just take a seat. Now, this special recognition, again, Mr. Libsy and his daughter Jennifer Libsy. In August, it was apparent that we, in fact, the new addition to the high school would be completed. And I had spoken to Art, who I've known for decades, said, "Chee, you know, it would be nice if the realtors could visit the facility and take a tour of that." And I talked to the superintendent about it, and we got, we got okays on that from the superintendent. He thought it was a good idea. And also from the vice president of the board, Bishop Williams. And Art and Jennifer facilitated this meeting. They sent out notices about the meeting. They contacted realtors in the area. And they welcomed realtors along with a number of the board members who were present at the meeting. And so, this evening, we're going to recognize them for that great work. And Art and Jennifer, would you like to come up and say a few words? Why don't you come up to the mic? And I just want to add that Jennifer Libsy has five children in the district. So she has a stake in this, a great stake in this district. Go ahead. Who wants to start, Art?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Perino. I'm glad you called, and I'm glad we had the opportunity to show all of you renovations and improvements at the Middletown High School to the realtors. You know, the realtors are out there every day talking to people about the area, about Middletown. And one of the questions people always have, "What about the school system?" So it was so nice to be able to let those realtors add that information that we saw about the school system to their benefits and features that they know about Middletown, because that's what people really want to know. And on that tour, Dr. Eastwood did such a great job of explaining what all those features mean and all the benefits that they give to the students and how they tie in to the teaching and the benefits that it's going to give the students once they leave the high school. So it was very good. So the realtors were really excited to see all of it. And Jennifer, Jennifer is a realtor. She does residential work. She also does commercial work. She was recently honored by the Commercial Realtors Association of the Hudson Valley as the Realtor with the most unique, is that it? Most creative presentation and transaction of the year. And she does a lot of work with social media. So she took some videos and put together a little presentation that we put on social media right after the tour. And maybe she could tell you about that.
Good evening, everybody. I do have five children. I have one in the high school, two in Monhegan, and two here in Presidential Park. And I also graduated, I think, third, fourth generation. My kids will be here, fourth? Fourth generation here in Middletown. The video was really just a simple video, a few clips, that Dr. Eastwood was explaining the program with the football helmets and the students, and how the biomed program is following the impacts of their, the head trauma through Chromebooks on the sidelines. That was the most viewed video. And I checked it today, and it had 276,000 views. 276,000 views. So that's pretty impressive. There were a few other views, talking about the CISTO, the program, the network programming, and that had over 100,000 views as well. So we're really hoping, we promote an online magazine called Middletown Living Magazine, where we try to put positive things on, if not daily, but weekly, all about Middletown and the schools and all of that. So proud of everybody here. So I just wanted to say that I love that my kids get to go to school here. And thank you, everybody in this room that has anything to do with that. Thank you so much.
Just one question. You, the views, was that on, was that on, what social media outlets? Was that on YouTube or was it?
It's pretty much on everything. It's on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram. It's on Vine, there's a few on Vine, there's on Flickr. It's on, it's on everything.
That's good. When you get to that level, when you get to that level, those videos begin to trend on the regular and everybody else is.
Yes. And I can tell you that the internet is a nasty place, and I have not seen any negative comments on any of the feeds so far, so.
Thank you.
Students, Jennifer was one of my students.
Yes.
Just a little while ago, and her brother Art was one of my students, correct?
Yes, at Twin Towers, yeah.
Good for you. Well, thank you for being here.
John, you're welcome.
Mr. President, I have one question.
Go ahead.
You'll, oh, thank you. What is the name of the video so we can look it up? I would like to look it up.
I will send all of the links to Kevin, if that's okay? And then he can just read it to you. But they are on our website, Middletown Living Magazine. So you can look that up, all of them right there.
Middletown Living Magazine.
Thank you for your work. I believe our school district is one of those gems in the Hudson Valley, and it's good that the word spread out.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you, but you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. We'd like that, stay, sit down.
Tonight is one of my son's birthdays.
Okay.
We're going to go home, we just went to the birthday gate. But thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Now, we, we're going to recognize two of our students who achieved the designation as Eagle Scout, but I don't see them here this evening, nor do I see the scoutmaster. Am I correct on that? Okay. They may come later, and then we'll work that in. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Now, we have some board recognition announcements and community reports. So we'll go around the table. And I think we'll start with Mr. Cosenzo, who said that the last time, he didn't have anything.
Yeah. It's been so long, I don't remember the date, but Mr. Gomez and I went to a meeting with Congressman Maloney. We thought he was going to be there, but unfortunately, he wasn't. A number, let's see, there were seven districts there, including a superintendent from Highland Falls, Dr. Frank Chaboy. And you think you got problems. Highland Falls, they only have a 17% taxable base there. Everything else is federal property. And they hurt every year, and he was trying to get something to do that. But anyway, our district has a very large special education population, and they require speech and language remediation and psychological services. And these should be Medicaid reimbursable. But what happens is, the way the law is written, we have speech therapists and school psychologists. In order to be reimbursed, you have to be a speech and language pathologist, which is a little bit more intensive training, and a school psychologist. But the speech and language pathologists don't do their internship in school. So it's kind of ironic that a speech therapist works in the schools, but we can't get the Medicaid reimbursement. So we went to the congressman to ask if he could do something with that. And he's on the agricultural committee, and I believe the transportation committee, but they do do things like this. But the disappointing part of the whole thing, of the meeting, was that Marie Ingraccia represented the congressman as an administrative assistant. And she said that she doesn't believe that the congressman, at this particular time, because of his other commitments, can do anything with this. And she suggested that we put it back to the New York State School Boards Association. And what was his name? Oh, Brian Fessler represented NISBA there. So we had a little conversation with him. He couldn't do anything at that particular time. So my suggestion or recommendation that whoever, I don't remember who our NISBA representative is here, that they get the background information about this, and at the next NISBA meeting, we could present that there. But we lose, literally, a mill, a year in what should be reimbursable services. So this is an important, it's not just a frivolous complaint. It's very, very important. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for attending. Appreciate it. Keisha, do you want to start us off in socks? Anything tonight? Okay, Mrs. Blumenau. Okay, Bishop Williams, go ahead.
Well, good evening, everybody. Let me turn this on.
Good evening, everybody. We, I guess we're off to a good start through our school year. Everything has been extremely, everybody has been extremely excited. My kids have come home extremely excited about their first days, all except the oldest one. Tracy, you might have to do something about that, because he's in that nonchalant, and he's trying to play real cool right now, so I'm going to leave. If you see, if you see him just capping in the back of the head and say, "Wake up." But, but we're off to a great start. And I want to commend everybody on the beginning of these first few days of the school year. I had the opportunity to attend the sixth grade orientation at the, at Twin Towers with my, with my youngest son. And, and he was nervous when he walked in, but when we walked out, he was extremely excited. And so, Mr. Dean and Mr. Roddy, you did an excellent job in your presentation. Mr. Roddy doesn't need a microphone. He, he, he projected his voice very loudly. And, and everybody heard you very well. And you did such a great job. So I want to commend you on that. There's a lot that's going to be going on in the district, coming up with sports and so many different things that are transpiring. I know that the parent teachers organizations are all on the move. The high school parent teachers organization is having their first meeting of the school year on this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the high school. They have already approached me about the Harlem Wizards game in November. And so we're going to promote that and push that. And if I don't hurt myself between now and November, I play. So we're excited about that. On another note, on another note, real quick, I, aside from what I do here in this town, in this town, in this city, with the local congregation, and aside from what I do here with the school board and these great people that sit around this table, there are some other areas that I, that I work in. I take everything I do very seriously. I just don't take myself too seriously. And I happen to have been blessed to be the bishop for the last, last seven years over the Eastern Caribbean Council of Nations or the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World. My diocese is in the Eastern Caribbean. And so I have spent the better part of my day trying to get in contact with my pastors and the churches and our people in Barbuda and St. Martin. We've just started work on building a new church in St. Martin. And as most, as most of you know, the island, the island of Barbuda has been totally, completely devastated. St. Martin has been hit very hard. And so I solicit your prayers and your thoughts for those islands, for the people there, even as we, even as we still remember the people that are affected in Texas and in the wake of that storm. Even now, as another storm is bearing down on those islands. So I solicit your prayers and your thoughts, even as we try to continue to get in touch with them. I'll be making my way down there as soon as possible. So, thank you. I wish you great success in this coming, in this coming school year to all of our staff and all of those that are involved in any way in this school district. Thank you. God bless you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Bishop Williams. Mrs. Tobiasin.
I too want to comment on the school opening and the orientations. I was able to attend the one at Monhegan Middle School and also the one here at Presidential. And great idea, a great way. The PTAs did a wonderful job of getting the parents, getting them signed up. I think the information that was disseminated to everyone there certainly makes for a much easier opening day for all. I did see Dan Higby last evening and asked him how the buses went. And I guess we had a real clear sailing there. There didn't seem to be any problems. And today, I dropped off the little one here at Presidential, and we were anxious to get in for kindergarten and for the breakfast. So I guess the free breakfasts and the lunches are a real big plus for our district. So to everyone, I say thank you. And to all the new teachers here, you've entered one of the most rewarding careers. And I've said this every year. You don't know which student coming across your threshold is going to be the next president, doctor, lawyer, Indian chief. But the rewards that you will get from teaching are monumental, believe me. And when you retire and you reflect back on some of those golden days, you'll, you'll understand what I'm trying to communicate to you. So good luck. Have a wonderful, wonderful year. And I, I know that you'll be successful with our students. I know there's going to be days that are going to be trying too, and you're going to be pulling your hair out. But the rewards are always there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin. Mr. Gomez, you have that stopwatch there? How's that working?
I'll discipline myself. Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, or exactly last Thursday, to be precise, I was with my children, my wife and children in Disney World, Florida. And the moment of, the highest moment of excitement for my two oldest children, who attend Monhegan Middle School, was not any particular ride or the Magic Kingdom Parade, but when the email all of a sudden came in of their programs. They were more excited about their academic programs. And it's, I think it's great when you see that morale among our students, that they can't wait, even though they're enjoying the summer there in Disney World, which is pretty expensive. But they're so excited to be back home to go to school. And having dropped off my children at Presidential Park and picked them up sometimes at Monhegan, with my interaction with teachers and staff members, I could also see the excitement. One staff member at Presidential expressed to me that she is so in love with her job that she just can't wait to be back. And mind you, someone who's been there for, I think, for almost thirty or twenty or thirty years. So it's great to see that morale, that positive morale among those that serve our community in the education field make a difference and in turn light that fire among our children. So I wish everybody a wonderful school year and that, I think, together, we can make a difference. And always remember that quote, that a wonderful, loving teacher will forever live in the heart of a student. Student could get to be eighty or ninety years old, but they will remember a word or two a special teacher said to them and how that teacher inspired them. And I know many of those inspirations are sitting here among us. Wish you all the best and Godspeed.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Nice. Nice job as usual. Mrs. Knapp, and for the people who do not know Mrs. Knapp, she's a longtime board member. And she also does a lot of work. She's head of the concession stand. And there's, there is a lot of work. You're smiling, but we know the work that goes into that. It's not only work at the stand, but there's work getting people to work at the stand and getting all the supplies in. So you do, she really does a magnificent job in the, in the district. And as a matter of fact, the concession stand has named the Linda A. Knapp Concession Stand. And rightfully, rightfully so, for all the years she's given.
Not quite ready for children.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, but I do need you tomorrow night, if you're available.
Well, you know, interestingly, you mentioned that. I have an antique house call in the afternoon, so.
So right after that's done, come on over.
I will, thank you.
I'm not going to repeat what everybody was saying about the opening of school, welcome to all the new people. This is a great place to work. As John has said, the sports have started. Football started this week and next week. There's two home games at Middletown. So if you're interested in that, you can certainly come. They start at seven o'clock. Cross Country started. Yeah, they were here. And soccer, even girls' soccer played last night in that rain. I was like, oh. But there's a lot of things going on in the district. And anything you're really interested in, come out and support the children. That, I think, is greatly appreciated by them. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I think it's probably my turn now. And, you know, I'm going to, sure. Well, as a matter of fact, Mr. Pierre said I could have his four minutes if necessary, so. You know, we have a number of new faculty members here this evening. And one of our recent retirees, Rhonda Perret, who taught for many years special education at the Middletown High School, variety of subjects. She crafted, and I use that word purposely, a letter to the editor. And I called Rhonda up, and I'm going to read parts of that letter. She said I could, I received her permission to do so. This is Rhonda Perret now. This is for all, especially for everyone, but especially for the new staff members. "You do and will continue to make a huge impact in your students' lives. You know that they are just not numbers or just represent your APPR. They are children who need to succeed in school. And you hold that key. You give your all and more every day. Fight the inequities they have in their lives and give them a future. The state beat you down with more requirements and less resources. And yet, you get in your car each day and go to work. You are educators, counselors, surrogate parents, psychologists, problem solvers, and babysitters. And you more than earn your compensation. You seldom leave at your contractual time. You advise clubs, sports, write curriculum, attend meetings, and more meetings. You spend hours of your own time looking at materials to use in your classroom. You constantly give out of your own pocket to child who needs a coat, food, prom ticket, never asking for anything in return. You don't hear "thank you" nearly enough." So I think on behalf of the board, I'm sure everyone agrees, we'd like to thank all our staff members. And we'd like to wish all our new staff members, who will be introduced shortly, the best. And I'm sure you're going to follow the advice in this letter. So that's one item. Now continuing very quickly. I'd like to thank all the individuals who helped with our summer graduation. Lauren Dur, the principal summer school. Dwayne Whitaker, the assistant. Lauren Dur, the principal summer school, Dwayne Whitaker, the assistant principal, Victor Rackey, Will Javier, Mike Warden and Mark Brownstone. They always constantly do a great job for this district. And Will is the new addition to our staff this evening in the, the pinkish hat over there, I guess. Yeah, thank you. It is a nice hat. Also, the, I must commend the buildings and ground staff and the custodial staff for getting the buildings ready for the school year. You know, it wasn't easy with all the construction going on in the district. Wasn't easy with the classes being held at the high school and here at Presidential Park, but as usual, they do a tremendous job and thank you Tom Scott and Pete Wilcox. Tom chaired, I guess that's the word, the construction in this, in the summer and he's going to report on that a little later, what's been going on. Also our food service. Rose mentioned the free breakfast and lunches. They've done a tremendous job, the Debbie Dunley, the Lauren Burr and all the food service staff, believe me, getting ready to new program in the district. I happened to attend a meeting, the Associate, the Association of School Administrators and, and what it was, is it was a meeting and hopefully we will get additional funding from that meeting. And again, Debbie and Lauren did an excellent job in presentation of the, of their program. Also I want to commend the Women's University Club and the, our students honored at that club. Our seniors Susan Chang, Shannon Ryan, Nena Eas and Rose Maria Vialles. They were honored by the top, some of our top graduates honored by the Women's University Club. Also from Middletown to our library, excellent summer reading program and a number of our students took advantage of the program. And finally, Liz Bowler's not here tonight, but she certainly expanded our pre-K program, the sites of our pre-K program. And one of the new sites being Temple Sinai, which has just tremendous, tremendous facilities if you've been, if you've been there. So that's it, that's it for me. And I, I think our next, our next item on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, is the, let's see, I think we have the, let's see, opportunities to address the board and the people familiar, familiar with this know that you sign in at the podium, you have four minutes. We don't dialogue with members of, who address the board. If there's a member of the administrative team who'd like to answer, that's fine, we will get back to you. Who would like to address the board? Any members? Any takers? Going once? Twice? Go on. Thank you. There's a second opportunity, by the way, to address the board. Mrs. Clark, do we have any letters to be? Okay, would you like to read that? Thank you.
This is from Brenda Maxwell Presnell. Dear Mr. Perino and Board, I want to write to thank you and Dr. Kenneth Eastwood for the beautiful ceremony you created for the 1967 Golden Grads. Not only were we welcomed with a tour highlighted by our yearbook photos on the monitors, but we walked into our high school auditorium displayed with flowers and refreshments where we were greeted by members of the school board as well. The ceremony, led by Mr. Estrada and Ms. Tracy Sorrentino, was lovely and surprisingly personal, one we will all treasure and remember. While I taught in Warwick over forty years, I have always supported and bragged about Middletown schools. They continue to care about their past and present students in a way that continues to make me proud. The celebration of Golden Grads is wonderful and I hope it continues. Sincerely, Brenda Maxwell Presnell.
Thank you very much for reading that, Mr. Perino. Next item is the approval of the personnel memorandum. And if there's no objections, if board members would like to approve personnel memorandum, six A instructional and six B non-instructional, may I have a motion to approve? See, Mrs. Knapp and Mr. Grisanto. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion is passed. Now we come to a very important part, a very lovely part in the meeting, the introduction of personnel. And Mr. Tuttle, would you like to?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Perino. Most of the folks that we have here tonight have already been board approved previously, but this is the first opportunity we've had for them to come and introduce themselves to the board. So I'm going to ask each building administrator or instructional leader to come up and they can call up their new staff member. We're going to start with Twin Towers and Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle, President Perino, members of the Board of Education. My pleasure to introduce two of our newest members, well, actually a current member just in a slightly different role, role of Twin Towers, first of all. Come on up, Mark. We have a new music teacher, Mark White. Mark is a recent graduate of the Crane School of Music and he'll be teaching guitar and piano classes at Twin Towers. And he, he had some outstanding student teaching experiences over in Susquehanna School District, actually over in Pennsylvania. And he brings a pretty strong academic pedigree with him, not only in college, but back in high school where he was his school's valedictorian. And so we're very excited that he will join our music department at Twin Towers. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Just a slight correction. Susquehanna Valley is actually in New York. Yeah. I'd just like to say that I've never heard of or been in a district that is more welcoming and supportive than the, what I've found here. And I'm just really excited to work with the students and my fellow staff as this year goes on. Thank you.
So clearly I would have got that right about Susquehanna had I had this guy as a social studies teacher back when I was in school. So our, our second one, Kyle, step on up. No stranger, I've spoken to you all and to the community about Mr. Kyle Roddy a few times over the last few years. He's been a social studies teacher at Twin Towers Middle School and I've spoken about his strengths as a teacher in the classroom. I've also spoken about how well he's represented our school district at the state level, presenting the last two years at the New York State Social Studies Conference. Mr. Roddy having completed all of his coursework and passed all his tests for his administrative certification, actually began a administrative internship with me last spring, carried on through the summer and now he's being, well, he was appointed board meeting ago, but here's the official, he'll be working as my full-time administrative intern in a role of a dean of students for the first semester of this school year. It's been a very smooth transition. He knows our students, he knows the community and we're very fortunate to have him with us. Kyle?
Thank you. Very briefly, I just want to thank the members of the Board of Education and district leadership for this opportunity. I am, I certainly couldn't be in a better place than Twin Towers. It's, it is a home to me and we are a family there and I know under the leadership of Mr. Dean, I'm going to grow into this new role and I'm very excited. And I want to thank my colleagues in Twin and across the district. Individuals from across the Middletown district have been so helpful and welcoming and I'm looking forward to a really great, great year. So thank you all again.
And, and I just, if it's okay, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, Mr. Perino touched on this a moment ago, about, he mentioned food service and buildings and grounds. As you all know, we went through a very quick transition at our school when our cafeteria was not available to us due to a delay in construction. And so on very short notice, we created the Twin Towers Cafinesium where we had to relocate our, our entire food service program to our large gymnasium. And, you know, it's, when you're around people a lot, you can tell the difference pretty easily between those who do the job and those who truly care about their work and, and do excellent work and expect nothing but excellence. So starting with Mr. Scott and then Mr. Wilcox and Mr. Valenti, the buildings and ground staff to, to what they had to do within the building to make all this work in each day in terms of transporting the food and, and getting it all there. And then our food service in the building under Brandy Hunter, who oversees my food service staff and, and all of her workers. You know, it's, it's difficult situations and it's been nothing but smiles and welcoming to the children. And I don't, I don't think, you know, the children want to know the difference, quite honestly, because it's gone off without a hitch, without a wrinkle. We're looking forward to our cafeteria opening on Monday, but I just, you know, those, those people, you know, they don't often get the recognition, the food service and buildings and ground staff, but they've really done an outstanding job for the children of this community. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm sure Mr. Dean that that would not have happened quite so smoothly, but with your leadership. And just a note also, Mr. Rodney is mayor of Goshen. And interesting to note, history repeats itself because in Twin Towers also, there was a staff member, Dan Johnson, who served as mayor of Middletown, I believe, for two terms. Could have been a little more than that, but he, I know Danny served for two terms. And Mr. Rodney, congratulations on your internship. I remember when I did my internship, I did not get paid any additional money and I had to get into the building at six thirty to call substitutes. So we had to do that at that time, rain, rain or shine or snow, whatever. So good luck, good luck to you. I'm sure you do a tremendous job. Thank you.
And Mr. Perino, his piano event in the city of Goshen, or in Goshen, I shouldn't say the city of Goshen, town of Goshen. And in the back, I think Ms. Dr. Johnson has one of the pianos from last year with the animals on it. Where'd he go? I thought he was right back there. He went, yeah, Dr. Johnson went. Okay. It was a success. I have a picture of a child, one of our students, playing the one out in front of Catherine's.
Okay, so sticking with the middle school levels, we'll have, bring up Mr. Redonia to introduce his new staff.
Okay, thank you and good evening, President Perino and the members of the Board of Education, Pastor Williams, Vice President Pastor Williams. The start of the school year's been very smooth. We've had a great first week so far. Just want to say a quick thank you to each of you. Many of you have found time either over the summer or already at the beginning of the school year to come to the building and spend some time with us or our children. And we always appreciate the support of the Board of Education because we know you're very busy and you have so many kids and schools to attend to. So I just wanted to thank you quickly for that. This summer, we interviewed quite a number of people at Monhegan Middle School. We hired seven new teachers. We are very pleased to have a, a great group of teachers that we feel are going to be very strong for our children. We have two with us this evening that we'd like to introduce. First, we have Ms. Eloisa Jessup. Ms. Jessup is certified not only Spanish seven through twelve, but also she's certified as a generalist for students with disabilities. She has her bachelor's in Hispanic Studies from Mount St. Mary's and also a master's in Students with Disabilities from Mount St. Mary as well. She most recently taught at East Ramapo and is joining us now as our Home Language Arts teacher. It's Ms. Eloisa Jessup.
Good evening. I would like to say thank you for the opportunity that you gave it me to instruct students and I look forward to have a great year with them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce our second teacher for this evening, Ms. Allison Muller. Allison has come to us from working for several leaves at Mayo Pack. She is certified in childhood education one through six, as well as having a biology extension, seven through nine. She has her BS from SUNY Oneonta and her master's in education from SUNY New Paltz. This year she will be teaching sixth grade math and science. Ms. Allison Muller.
I wanted to thank Mr. Perino and the rest of the Board of Education for this opportunity. I already feel very embraced by the community and welcomed and I'm excited and I love the kids already. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'd like to have the high school folks come up. Tracy Sorrentino and Norville.
Good evening, Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Perino, members of the board. With us tonight, we have three new members to our group. We have Mr. Scott Test joining us in our music program. Mr. Test has a background in vocal music as well as instrumental. He has led several choirs and has already hit the ground running, partnering with the rest of our amazing music staff to bring students into the department. So welcome, Mr. Scott Test.
When you get an education degree, they ask you who is music education for? It's one of the fundamental questions and they teach you that the answer to that question is everyone. Full stop. I am entering this district after several years of teaching privately where the word "everyone" had an asterisk next to it. Everyone who can afford it, everyone who's comfortable being here, everyone whose parents can get them here. What I find inspiring about this district is that there is no asterisk next to everyone. Here, when we say the education is for everyone, we mean everyone, capital E, arms open to the sky, everyone. And I really look forward to embracing that in the year ahead of me. Thanks for this opportunity, I really appreciate it.
In our visual arts program, we have Elena Mandola. Elena has a strong background in graphic arts and digital communications. She's done leaves across the river in Millbrook and joins us in our FEMA program this year. Elena?
I just first want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I am extremely excited to start my career here in Middletown and it's been extremely refreshing since I've been starting that I've been embraced by all of my co-teachers and staff members. So I look forward to learning from everyone and inspiring the students and thank you.
And then joining us in House Three as the guidance counselor to replace Mr. Williams who moved on to administration is Ms. Christine Reiner. Ms. Reiner is no stranger to our students in our district as she's worked with several community agencies partnering with us to support them. She has a very strong background in academic improvement and working with our students in order to think beyond the four years. Welcome, Christine.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and I just want to thank you so much for this opportunity. I am so very excited to meet with students and grow those relationships and meet staff and I just deeply thank you for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sorrentino. Now we'll go down to the elementary level. Mr. Matt Kelly from Maple Hill has a teacher, Colleen Mannion.
Good evening, Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Perino, members of the board. This time of year, you're all well aware, we've gone through, for the administrators in room, how many times have we gone through OLS, looking for applicants, looking for applicants? You know, we always want to find the best for Middletown. You know, in our case, I, I would generally like to think it's the best fantasy draft league you can do, trying to find the best players for the best positions, for the best fit for our kids. And there's a couple laps, because you get that, and if you've been a fantasy draft league player, you understand that. At Maple Hill, we've been very
At Maple Hill, we've been very fortunate that we've been continuously trying to find the best fit for our kids because that's exactly what we want to do. And in this case, since I'm doing a little bit of a sports analogy, and I'm an Oneonta alumni, we were able to find an Oneonta alumni to fill one of our spots. So this year, we're going to have Colleen Mannion filling one of our first grade leaves for an entire year, and we're more than happy to have her in that spot to help serve our kids.
Well, I'm extremely excited to be your first round draft pick, let me tell you. I want to thank everyone here, and my staff has been amazing. Staff and administration, they've welcomed me with open arms. I just graduated in May, so all of this is very new, and the opportunity is incredible. You know, you study it for so long, but to actually be in the classroom with their little hands and their little feet, they're so cute. But I'm extremely excited to work with them, and I'm extremely excited for this opportunity. So thank you very much.
In Middletown, we all work as a team. One hand helps the other. And in this case, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Marconi because she's actually going to be introducing our school psychologist that we have for this year because that's also her department as well. So we had to import this one from Colorado.
Good evening, everybody. So Ariel is coming from Colorado. She's relocated here. She's come from a similar school district, working with a similar demographic and population, and we're very excited to have her join our team.
I just want to thank everybody. It's great to be back in New York. I grew up here. I had a really fun time in Colorado, but I'm just happy to be here. I'm really excited. Everyone I've met has been very friendly and welcoming, and I'm just excited to work with the kids and get to know everybody. Thank you.
And then we'll go over to the Truman Moon Annex. If Ms. Marconi can stay up there, please. Introduce our newest administrative assistant principal.
So I'm very happy to introduce Nicole Tagney. She is coming from New York City. She worked, has experienced with special education teacher. She became a STEM coordinator and from there became a curriculum coach. She's going to be helping us to supervise the program at the Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon, as well as assist with some special services duties. So we're very happy to have her on board.
Good evening. Thank you, Karen, and members of the board. I'm thrilled to join the Middletown team this year at the Annex at Truman Moon. I am honored to be part of a district that I believe is innovative, inventive, and full of student opportunities. And I look forward to working with staff, families, and students throughout the school year. Thank you.
So also, we have joining the team at the Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon is Crystal Marrero as a school psychologist. She has recently graduated from Marist, and we're really looking forward to have her getting her feet wet at the Annex.
Good evening. I just want to say I'm so grateful for this opportunity, and I'm really excited to start this year. This week has been amazing, and I cannot wait to continue it. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And then we'll save the most for last, Ms. Short. Come on up.
Good evening, Mike, Mr. Tuttle, I should say, President Perino, members of the board. Yes, I do have the largest group here, so maybe it was best that we didn't save this for last. I had to really laugh when Mr. Kelly was talking about OLAS because, yes, it's been a summer of searching and trolling on OLAS. But again, as Matt said, we really are looking for the best people for our district, and I do believe that we have found them. And so the search is worth it when we find individuals of such high caliber as we have here in this room tonight. All right, so let me take a look because I've got a lot of them. All right, I'm going to start off by asking Mrs. Brotto join me up here, and I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Wendy Rincon. The interesting thing about Ms. Rincon is that she did some subbing for us here in Middletown last year, and I got a call from Mr. Del Maro giving me her name, and he thought that she would be a great fit for our fourth grade bilingual program. She's also a former sergeant in the New York Police Department. So I asked her in our interview, what kind of skills did you bring from the police force to teaching? And the first thing she said was flexibility, which I can completely understand. The next thing she said was just basically caring about people. So she's awesome. Mrs. Brotto's not coming.
Thank you, Mr. Perino and members of the board. Thank you, Principal Short, for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve in the community that I call home here in Orange County after having served for the New York City Police Department for 20 years. People always ask me, why did you want to become a teacher after being a cop? I said, you know, I would love to be able to help children develop the coping skills and equip them with the other academic skills they need to make better choices so they don't become adults that grow up dysfunctional and making bad choices and coming into contact with the criminal justice system, you know? And I think that in a community like this, there's so many young men and women that need someone who's an example of what it is to succeed in spite of adversity, in spite of your background. And it doesn't matter where you come from. I grew up in the South Bronx in the poorest of neighborhoods. And I come from a family where my grandfather had a second-grade education. And he drove a cab and learned how to save his money, bought a house, bought a business, built another house. And in doing that and watching his work ethic, that's where I get it from. So I'm just really blessed to be here in a district that is so innovative and working in a school community that is so collaborative and with such a level of collegiality that I feel like I'm right at home. So thank you very much.
All right, next I'd like to introduce Mr. Daniel Schwartz. Dan began subbing for Presidential Park in the Middletown City Schools last year. And we caught his, or he caught my eye right away because he just couldn't seem to do enough. And he always wanted to be helpful and help out in dismissal, even if he didn't have to. And I remember saying to him, you know what, Dan? If you really work hard and you do a good job in daily subbing, you just might be able to get a long-term leave, which is often the path to permanent employment here in the district. And he did just that. He did a leave at Maple Hill, and we did interview him for just a leave position. And then we ended up having a resignation. And I was really pleased to be able to say to Dan, I'm offering you a full-time position at this point. He's an awesome young man, and we're really excited to have him. He'll be teaching fourth grade ELA. Dan.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I really fell in love with the amount of innovation and support in Middletown. I was really, there's really nowhere else I would want to start my career. So thank you so much. Look forward to it.
All right, next we have Mrs. Nancy Hamilton. She is an experienced veteran, having taught in the South Bronx in New York City. She gave intense and wonderful answers to our questions, and we're really looking forward to having her. And it's always a pleasure to hire veterans because they bring something more to the table. But again, just having her with us and being able to have her share in her experiences from the city is a real positive. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and I'm very excited to be a part of the district. Coming from a high-needs area, I've never seen a district with this population that does so much and provides so many opportunities. And it's just really amazing to me, and everybody's been really welcoming, and I'm very excited to be on board.
All right, next we have Jessica Olson. Jessica has come into us from Eldredge. She was a kindergarten teacher for many years, and interviewing her seemed like the perfect fit because she was able to give us really excellent answers about kindergarten and early literacy. So she will be teaching kindergarten AIS here at Presidential Park. Jessica.
Hello, everyone. I just want to thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm so excited and honored to be a part of this amazing district. Thank you.
All right, next we have Mary Procaro. Mary is actually going to be working in two different buildings. She'll be working at Presidential Park, teaching general music, and she's going to be working at William A. Carter, teaching strings. Just talking to Mary during the interview about her love of music and her talent of her own playing and her journey as a musician, as well as having taught in New York City. Prior to coming here, it was a pleasure to meet her. And it's not easy to find somebody who has such skill in general music as well as strings. And the minute this young lady sat down and began to speak with us, I knew we had a winner. So we're really happy to have her on board. Mary.
Thank you, Ms. Short. I just want to thank the board and all of my colleagues for this opportunity. So far, only two days in, and Carter and Presidential, all the staff have been more than welcoming and amazing. So I just want to thank you again for this opportunity.
So we have two new school psychologists at Presidential Park. Erin Bevel is the first one. He comes to us from Texas. Oh, closer to the mic. I did it again. Okay. He comes to us from Texas, and one of the things that he said in his interview is he has a very similar caseload to what he's going to be having at Presidential Park. So that was one of the, I think, most challenging pieces as far as placing somebody in this building because of the size. So we're very happy to have him on board with his experience as well.
Just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the students of Middletown. A lot of my coworkers, when I told them that I was coming from Fort Worth, Texas, to Middletown, they said, why? You know, why would you go from a school district of 88,000 to a school district of 7,000? But I feel that in the interview, you know, the heart of Dr. Eastwood and the initiatives that he has been working on in the district for the last several years really just touched my heart, as well as meeting with Ms. Marconi and hearing about some of the things that she wants to do with the school psychologists in the district as well. And I just want to thank you again, and everyone's been saying how welcoming everyone has been. And Ms. Short and her staff has been very welcoming as well. Thank you.
And next we have Joshua Pilgrim as the school psychologist who will be working with Erin. He just recently graduated from Long Island University. He did his internship at Ramapo School District, and I couldn't think of a better team to work at Presidential Park.
I just want to thank you all for this opportunity. I actually live in Rockland County. I grew up in the East Ramapo School District. I did my internship in the Ramapo School District in South Florida. So dealing with the population like the one here in Middletown is nothing new to me. I'm just excited for this opportunity. I'm glad that my first year of being a school psychologist could actually be here in Presidential Park. And again, Ms. Short and her staff have been so welcoming. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That concludes the introductions. Just want to say thank you to all the administrators coming out, all the new staff coming out. Have a great year and good luck.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is under Superintendent's report. Mr. Scott is going to speak about the construction update in the district. And in this district, we pride ourselves in keeping our buildings in the best condition possible. So a great deal of construction, renovation has gone on in the district. And before you begin, Mr. Scott, you probably noticed the viewing audience at the superintendent and assistant superintendent, Richard Del Maro, Kenny Eastwood superintendent, Richard Del Maro, not here this evening. They are down in Washington along with Amy Creedon to discuss our work on the grant that we received, the 20 million, 20th Century Grant, $20 million grant. Race to the Top Grant. So good for them, and I'm sure they'll bring back much information on that. Tom, nice job this summer, as Gordon said and members of the board have said. I know it's been a tough summer for you and your staff, but go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Perino had asked me to update the board on the capital projects that we've been working on. And all the projects that are currently under construction and finishing right now were voted on in December of 2014. So as you can see, it takes quite a time to get a project through State Education Department and then into construction, of course, and to finish that work. Middletown High School construction started in the spring of 2016, and the work completed there. I know many of the board members have visited the building and toured it. We have two large additions. One is up on the third floor, which encompasses an innovation lab, 13 classrooms, and three small instruction rooms. There was work, of course, going into the virality wing where that connects. And then down on the lower level, a large innovation lab. A room that's called a capstone multipurpose room was built. And we renovated four classrooms and added about four additional. In addition to that, we installed a new gas service to the kitchen at the high school that would take care of any future expansion. We completed all the paving projects on that site, added temperature control to all the server rooms at the concession stand in the fieldhouse. And they served the press box and all the communications from the stadium area. And then last, the tennis court replacement is still under construction. That's a little bit behind, but we hope to have that finished in the next few weeks. That is pretty much everything at the high school, and I think you're probably much more familiar with that because it's been ongoing for such a period of time. The next building is Twin Towers Middle School, and there's a tremendous amount of work completed at Twin Towers this summer. We completed the roofing projects, which started last summer. We had some delays on. Put in new lockers throughout the entire building, put in a new gym floor and a small gymnasium. We've renovated the boys' and girls' locker rooms, renovated the cafeteria, and Mr. Dean has spoken briefly about that. The auditorium has also had a significant amount of work. All the floor tiles have been removed in there, carpeting's been installed in all the aisles and in the pit area. And that'll be a real improvement, particularly during performances. It's a soft surface to walk on compared to the hard tile, so I think that'll be really welcomed. In addition, we installed a handicap lift to the stage and new stairs to the stage along with handrails to replace the old stairs that went up the front. That gives people much better sightlines in the first few rows because those stairs no longer stick out in the front. Additionally, we removed a couple of rows of seats there to give more room in the pit because many of our bands and orchestras are growing, and there's more, we need more space there, as well as more handicapped seating. We repaved all the parking lots at Twin Towers, all new sidewalks on Grand Avenue, and new curved sidewalks, backstops, bleachers, and dugouts for the baseball and softball teams. And that's all been accomplished since the day after graduation until, basically, this past Monday. That work was ongoing. Monhagen Middle School, we completed the heating-ventilating project, which started last spring. Installed new carpeting in main offices and libraries, new floor tiles through all the hallways and common spaces, all new curbs and sidewalks, repaved all the parking lots. And additionally, we paved a gravel lot, which is back by the running track so that when folks come to either sporting events or they want to walk on the tracks on off-hours, that's all new paved lot. And we put in a new fire alarm panel in that building. Maple Hill Elementary, we have new heating controls in all the classrooms, carpeting in the main office and the library, and this is sort of parallel to Monhagen. They were both built at the same time. William Carter, we installed new heating units in thirty-two classrooms, repaired casework, meaning all the cabinetry around those heating units, some new flooring and ceilings in the classrooms which face East Main Street, and we added some elements to the fire alarm system. Here at Presidential Park, if you go out the back of the building, there's a new parking lot, which will help, you know, some of our busier days here. And it's really aimed at some of the staff which can enter the back of the building and sign in on that side. Truman Moon, we demolished and removed those temporary classrooms, which were in very poor shape. Additionally, we put temperature control in the main server room in that building and then some upgrades to the fire alarm system as well. The food service building, we've added toilet facilities. That building never had those, which we have built those in the back. And additionally, within that addition, there's toilets for the softball field. We used to use Porta-Saint, Porta-John's there, but that will no longer be needed. Our maintenance garage, we put in new ventilation exhaust systems to meet current standards because that is an auto repair shop, and we need the ventilation there. So that pretty much wraps up, excuse me, and the Buildings and Grounds Office, a new ventilation system because there was never a ventilation system in that as well. So if anybody has any questions about that work, it's a tremendous amount of work. Because this was a forty-six million dollar bond, about twenty-five million of it is the high school, and the rest of it was this summer. So you can see, we put a tremendous amount of work in place in, you know, about eight or nine weeks. And contractors on a whole were very cooperative, and the Buildings and Grounds staff was, you know, really key to getting this done. My assistant, P. Wilcox, and all of our staff, you know, worked hand-to-hand with contractors to make sure that that was accomplished. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Any questions from any of the board members? Mrs. Knapp?
I don't really have a question, but I just want to emphasize how much work you did this summer and how everybody worked together to get the project done for the opening of the school year. I think that that is a very important aspect, and I feel that shows everybody worked together as a team. And you can be proud that everything got put together except one little minor thing, and that's going to be fixed soon. So congratulations on that, Tom.
Well, thank you very much. One thing I'd really like to commend P. Wilcox on is he has devised a method of moving the custodial staff and grouping them, you know, take two or three buildings, get them finished, and then start moving the staff in greater numbers. And at the end, the buildings that needed the most attention right at the end of the summer were, like, say, the high school and Twin Towers, and we would have twenty-five or thirty staff members in those buildings, you know, for their, that whole week and finish the building. So it worked out very well.
And Ms. Tobiasin, did you have anything?
Yes. First of all, congratulations. Everything is beautiful. And thank you with your comments about the stairs. As you well know, I was concerned when we had the concert there for the Newberg Symphony and art students. So thank you for those attentions. I just wanted to know if you would like to just comment on some of the comments from neighbors in the surrounding area about what you're doing here, the fence area?
Oh.
With the track?
What we're looking at is, we've actually been expanding the cross-country course that's being built on this site. And at the same time, we've recognized that some of the fencing along our property line going up the hill and probably back alongside of Randall Heights might need some attention. So we're looking into that. We've just located some of the survey pins, just to make sure that where our property line is and where the fence falls. So I may have a recommendation on that relatively soon of what to do with that area.
I just wanted you to emphasize more that you're doing the track there.
Yeah. And the cross-country track was used today for the very first time. Both the boys' and girls' meet did go off. I'm sure Dave Coats will let you know more about that in the future, but it looked like it went well.
Where did you go on your vacation this summer?
Well, tell you a funny story. About a month ago on a Friday afternoon, I told Vince this earlier, I'd taken my wife out just to walk through the high school building because it was pretty much completed. And we finished, we got back in the car. I says, "Now I understand why you don't sleep." So it was a very busy summer for all, everybody really was. Thanks.
Can't really thank you and your team enough for everything that you've accomplished over the past couple of years in our district, from the building that we're sitting in right now to the new high school addition is just incredible. And having had children come through Middletown in their buildings, which were always kept, certainly tip-top, shaded even then, so long ago, you know, ten years ago. It's such a pleasure to walk through our buildings now, and there's such a sense of pride. Our students feel it, our parents feel it. They know that it's theirs, they know that it belongs to them, and when we make, when we provide spaces for our children that they can be proud of, they're going to be successful. This is not about show and tell. This is not about, you know, what we can, what we can put out there to the public. This is about making a special home for our children. And you clearly take pride in that every day. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
And yours team, your team. I know you don't do it alone. You don't sleep. They probably do a little.
Yes, that's true.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't normally, I don't normally say anything about negative people, but to all the naysayers that were out there that questioned whether or not this project was going to be finished on time, I just want to commend you because you've now given me the ability to be able to say, "I told you so."
I'm glad you have that.
And again, kudos and commend you and your team on such a good job. And also, you know, I didn't bother you, bother you that much over the last year with Buildings and Grounds Committee because you kept us as a board so well-informed on everything that was going on. And I didn't want to take up any of your time. We would talk periodically, but you guys have kept us so well-informed through each step of the, of the project. And to be able to go over there and see what it was at the beginning to where it is now is just amazing. It's just amazing. And so I look forward to the next project.
Next summer will be William Carter.
Will be William Carter. And you will give me the ability then to be able to tell the parents at William Carter, who I have to deal with these last few mornings, tell them, "I told you so."
Yeah. We hope to have a significant improvement.
Thank you.
Well said, Bishop Williams. Now, there's, here's another benefit. Mr. Scott's been with the district how many years, Tom?
This is my nineteenth year.
Nineteenth year. And again, there's a benefit for having someone in positions for a long period of time because they can, they can look down the road and see what exactly is needed. And you most definitely have done that, Tom. This district is a much better district with all the preventative maintenance and the construction. Every time I walk in this building, I have a smile on my face, thinking that Mr. Estrada knows that, all what we had to go through to get this building. So thank you again. And your staff also, please convey our thanks to your staff.
I will certainly pass that along.
Buildings and grounds. Go ahead, Linda.
You know, we've done a lot of projects that we were able to say to those naysayers.
Yes, we have, yeah.
We did a lot of things we've done in the last, how many years we've been here, John?
A little while.
Fourteen years. We've said that before.
Not only in building, but curriculum. And I really believe our, our taxpayers have to be commended for proving the bond issues and so on. They've stood behind us with all the new programs. We wouldn't be able to do it without them. So thank you very much to the public out there. Thanks, Tommy.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Next, the approval of financial memorandum, number seven. What do we have, Rose?
Just, excuse me. Previously this evening, we had a resolution. Should that be in the action item? No. Okay. That's, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of financial memorandum, number seven. I may have a motion to approve that. We've had documentation on this before. Mrs. Tobiasin and Bishop Williams. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously? Approval of special service memorandum, number five. Rose and Linda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously carried, motion passes. I have a resolution to select John Redman as the Area Nine Director of New York State School Boards Association. Any discussion?
I had the opportunity last night at the OCSBA meeting to meet with Mr. Redman, and he addressed all of the members that were there, spoke very well. He's been a longtime member, as Mr. Estrada knows, he's been a longtime member of OCSBA and very involved in education for a couple of decades. And he's not a political man, but is just the right type of person that we need in this position. So I fully support this nomination and this election of him to this particular position.
We had the benefit of excellent candidates for this position, and to excellent candidates, we had nominated Mr. Redman in the past, and we're supporting him now. So let's see, we have a motion on the table. And we have a second on this? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we have an approval to support the Maestro versus State in New York on behalf of all city school districts. Mike, do you want to just speak on this for a moment for the public?
Yeah, okay. This is the approval to support or contribute to the legality or the litigation of the small city schools, the eight school districts that have formed together to form an alliance. I believe it's at the Appell Division. They started hearing arguments this week, and it's really a contribution to help support any of the resources necessary to fund the litigation. If you recall, I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. Um, I'm not sure if you've seen it. It's been a long time since I've seen it. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts.
in a democracy, and who can find common ground in their differences and respect where common ground is absent. Absent. And where, and be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown does hereby support the work of the School Superintendent Association. Additionally, the Enlarged City School District of Middletown supports and values inclusive, safe, and innovative quality public education that ensures all students can succeed and support the I Love Public Education Campaign. Therefore, the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, in support of the statements above and the I Love Public Education Campaign, hereby present its slogan as, "Every student, every day, public education works." Middletown is a perfect example.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We have the motion.
Yes.
Discussion. Yes. I am hoping that this resolution will be sent to the United States Department of Education, our person in Washington, DC, without mentioning names, but this needs to go to Washington.
Most certainly does. Shows exactly what we're all about. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously carried. I have a resolution to select. John Redman is the Area Nine Director of New York State School Boards Association. Any discussion?
I had the opportunity last night at the OCSPA meeting to meet with Mr. Redman, and he addressed all of the members that were there. Spoke very well. He's been a longtime member, as Mr. Estrada knows, he's been a longtime member of OCSPA and very involved in education for a couple of decades. And is not a political man, but is just the right type of person that we need in this position. So, I fully support this nomination and this election of him to this particular position.
We had the benefit of excellent candidates for this position, and to excellent candidates, we had nominated Mr. Redman in the past, and we're supporting him now. So, let's see, we have a motion on the table. And we have a second on this? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we have an approval to support the Maestro versus State of New York on behalf of all city school districts. Mike, do you want to just speak on this for a moment for the public?
Yeah, okay. This is the approval to support or contribute to the legality or the litigation of the small city schools, the eight school districts that have formed together to form an alliance. I believe it's at the Appel Division. They started hearing arguments this week, and it's really a contribution to help support any of the resources necessary to fund the litigation. If you recall, I think it started back in 2008 when the funding sources changed for school districts. At this point, they're estimating, our district is about $47 million underfunded since 2008, and other districts are in a similar situation. So, this is, they have a lawsuit against the New York State Education, trying to restore some of the funding, the proper funding sources for the small city schools.
Thank you. I'm going to read this motion. Motion to approve the following. As a small city school district, the Enlarged City School District of Middletown has agreed to provide $5,000 in support of Maestro versus State of New York on behalf of the small city school districts. I have a motion on this?
Second.
Let's see.
I yield to.
Okay. Bishop Williams and Mr. Gomez. Any, any further discussion? Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I just want to make brief comments for the record. I'm proud as a member of the board to strongly support this collaborative effort of the small school districts of New York State. As we all know, New York State is considered a state that spends more per capita on students. And the question that taxpayers always ask themselves, are we getting our money's worth? Is it going down the drain? When you look at a district like Middletown, you see that here, we're getting our money's worth. We are a school district that's fiscally conservative in spending, considers the concerns and the burdens our taxpayers carry on their shoulders, and gives priority to putting our children first. Yet, there is no fairness or equity when it comes to the state and how our districts are funded. And I think it's time that we stand together in one voice. Enough is enough. As an attorney, it's, believe it or not, I'm not a fan of litigation, but it comes time that we have to stand together in one voice. So, I am proud to support this, and I, it is my goal that the message will be sent to Albany loud and clear, and that here in New York, we could set a precedent for fairness in education funding that could benefit not just our children in this district, but children throughout the United States.
Thank you. And Mr. Gomez has agreed to be Chair of the Fair Funding Committee for this year. Thank you. And Mr. C.
Not as a correction, but Middletown has one of the lowest costs per student of any district of a similar size and situation. So, that's a big plus.
Great. We've done that. We provide excellent, we provide excellent education with many, many programs. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we come to the second opportunity to address the board. Dr. Johnson, ah, yes.
My name is Paul Johnson. I would appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. So, I was here 200 years ago, and it occurs to me, looking at the agenda, that very few people, if any, would remember the fact that I am the person who instituted the second opportunity to address the board. At the time, we tended to have more spirited meetings, and my thought was that if a member of the audience was motivated to speak to an issue, they would have to wait two weeks to come back and speak to the issue again. So, I said, well, why don't we leave it that they could come at the end of the meeting and talk about something? And for the most part, it turned out well. Now, this evening, it's a big advantage because we get to speak privately. It's just us. Nobody else is listening, and that's a good thing. I also want to thank both as a previous member of this board and member of the council, you've allowed Mr. Gomez to come to our meetings, as if he doesn't have enough meetings to go to, and keep a surprise of your issues. And as a member of the council, not speaking for the council, I do appreciate that. Thirdly, I did get the opportunity to tour the high school with the superintendent, both the upper level and lower. It's inspiring. You could close your eyes and say you're touring a college campus, and this is where your child will be going as a freshman next year. It's a beautiful thing. And certainly, Mr. Scott has achieved rock star status pulling that off. So, I compliment him as well as the rest of the board. Fourthly, I just wanted to talk about the fact that, as policymakers, I think we all shuddered when the tax cap was instituted. Many of us who were in the brink of that moment thought that this was going to be the demise of progress. So, I really want to compliment both the administration for the school district and also for the city of Middletown. I think both of those leaders have been aggressive and innovative. Yes, we bonded some of our expense, but we both stayed within the tax cap. We both have done amazing things in the last five years. I want to alliterate what's happening at the city. I want to talk about the school tonight. And I really hope that all of our mutual constituents can take a moment, because most of us, as we know, most of our constituents have no idea of what we're doing, or why we're doing it, or how much we spent to do it, because they're busy living their lives. But I would hope that all of our mutual constituents can take a moment to look around and see what we've accomplished collectively to improve the quality of life in our community. And I'm here to compliment you and congratulate you on your contributions. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for everything you do for the district and the community. And now, Mr. Estrada, put that timer on.
Yeah, you better. Hi, everybody, and nice to see everybody with a great start to the school year. I'm very glad that you approved Mr. Redman as the NIS-BENINE Director. I've known him for a long period of time. He will do an outstanding job. He's not a political guy, but he is a policy wonk, so, and that's what you need for that particular position, because it deals with a lot of the resolutions as well. Also glad that you supported the $5,000 expenditure for the Small City School District lawsuit. Although Middletown's not one of the plaintiffs on there, whatever comes out of that litigation, which will be a change in the funding formula for small city school districts, will inherently help the school district here as well. A suggestion that I, I don't know why I've never, I didn't think of it when I was at the table here, is that perhaps maybe on our website, there could be a tab on there that says something to the effect of, "Meet Our District Employees," because I think it would be great if we had a picture of our Buildings and Grounds crew for our website, and our food service workers at our website. The amount of work, there's a great question Mr. Crescendo asked, you know, what'd you do, where'd you go on your vacation? I know where he was on his vacation, and it was right here in the school district. So, the amount of work that they've had to do over the summer here to get the buildings ready, Mrs. Knapp pointed it out, is absolutely amazing. Labor Day weekend for them was not like our Labor Day weekend for us. They were, some of them were in there Saturday and Sunday, making sure the furniture was all ready in a new part of the building. So, I commend Tom and his staff for doing an outstanding job. The tech department, making sure that building's running smoothly right now. The amount of additional staff that you need for the technical part and the Buildings and Grounds part for the expansion of the buildings immense. The naysayers, you know, when you're back over on this side, you kind of think about why people are naysayers and stuff. They haven't had good experiences in the past with public entities, and that's the reason why they're naysayers, because, let's put it, you know, Congress has let us down, sometimes the White House has let us down. Wherever you go, public government hasn't done a great job in general, and that's why you have naysayers. But you guys have a track record now. You have a track record of at least 15 solid years of bringing projects in on time and under budget. There isn't one that we've done that's gone in the opposite direction. And so, I think the confidence that the public has in you, you can see, because there's a lot of blue chairs out here, on the first board meeting after two days of opening school, right? There's nobody here. That also goes for me to say that we need to do a better job as parents to make sure that our kids are taking advantage of what you guys have now offered. You have a college campus at the high school. You have beautiful buildings in the elementary school. You have parents invited on the first day of kindergarten, which was, we were the first district to do that, because Dr. Eastwood wanted it to be a non-scary event for kindergartners coming in, if you all remember. And now, other school districts are doing that. And I talked to Dr. Johnson earlier about the fact that we have, you guys have to consider yourselves, he mentioned the word "trailblazer," and I agree with that. Before we started building new schools and making our areas beautiful for our students to take pride in, other school districts would get voted down whenever there was a big spending thing. People were very scared of that because they didn't see any return on it. And I think because of what we've done in this district with all of our buildings and our upkeep and all of our, and our voters having the confidence to vote for those projects, and I'll wrap up right now. Goshen and Newburgh, if you noticed, over the last couple of months, are proposing major infrastructure improvements to both of their school districts. And the only reason why they do that is because their taxpayers now see what's happened here. And they say, hmm, they're becoming very successful because they're putting the stuff in there to be successful. And I think they're going to be successful in their votes because of what you guys have done over the last 15 years. So, I commend you guys for that, and good luck and a great year.
And Ed, I want to thank you for all you've done and are doing for the district. And at the last meeting, I mentioned that your daughter, Cal, RIT student, walked away with just about a whole year of college credit that was accepted. So, good for you and good for the Syracuse University program. Thank you, Ed. Go ahead.
Ed, you notice all the free positive press both those districts are getting on their projects. Hmm, but we still get it done.
Let's see, we have committee reports. I think Mr. Gomez, he's liaison cities chatting to go here, chomping at the bit. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think great things are happening in the city of Middletown. And before I address what city hall, this past August, we had in Middletown the Rally Against Hate, where residents of Middletown, as well as our surrounding communities, of all political persuasions, backgrounds, ages, came together to say that in our, we will stand as a city on a hill. We will be a city where love triumphs over hate. There will be no room for hate, but all of us will be able to wave the red, white, and blue as one people, one nation, and the God. And two outstanding speakers that electrified the occasion were our very own Bishop Williams and Rabbi Marcus Rubenstein. So, we thanked them for their inspirational words of hope and inspiration. And it was also great to see many, numerous members of our school board, including Mr. Crescendo over there. And it's great that we stand together with our community for the good of our people. Other great things happening in the city of Middletown. The skate park was completed right outside of the library. That was, it's been the talk of town, and a lot of excitement in the Common Council regarding the skateboard. And the Common Council, including the mayor, the mayor and the Common Council were well received with much excitement, the presentation I gave them with respect to our school district's partnership with Middletown Medical and Affinity. It shows that when there's a public and private sector partnership, great things could be done. And what we're doing in our school district to make sure that all our children have affordable and quality preventive health care, something admirable, I think. Given that health care is the big issue right now at the national, at the national level, we're getting action done here at the local level. So, and of course, Dr. Johnson, who's a member of the Common Council, spoke very eloquently with passion of his visit to the high school and about our efforts with collaborative learning. So, that was very wonderful to hear.
I think you said Middletown Medical.
Oh, okay. Let me correct. The Middletown Community Health Center, in partnership with Affinity and the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, will be working together, as reported on the August 3 Common Council meeting, with respect to preventive medical services for our students, which also include dental.
Order committee will meet at the end of this month, and we'll have a report, the 28th, yeah, have a report when that's done.
Well, we had a change order committee today.
I said the IEPs keep rolling on. We had a change order committee meeting this evening at 5:00, and Mrs. Knapp is on the committee, and Mr. Crescendo's on a committee, and Paula Blumenau is on the committee. I asked that a notice be sent to you. So, we apologize for that.
We can discuss that later.
So, but everything, they, they will be presented at the next meeting. They're just items that we have to do, and there's no getting around that, and nothing unusual, nothing unusual there. Our commitment is to, first commitment is to safety of the students, and that's, students and staff, and that's what we, that's what, that's what our goal is. Anything else on committee reports?
No, we need a motion to adjourn.
I guess I missed.
Wait a second. We've got to, anything on, see, we have, before we have a motion to adjourn, roundtable, anything new and compelling?
On roundtable, I think, I don't mean to be talking too much, it'll be more quiet the next meeting, but.
Give me that timeline. I'm kidding.
Well, with respect to something new I have brought up to Mr. Perino's attention, there's nothing that concerns more parents or anyone who has children than their safety, and that includes the safety of boarding and leaving their school buses. There is legislation pending in Albany to increase the penalties for passing a stopped school bus when children are getting on and getting off. The bill in the state senate, sponsored by Senator Bonisek, passed, which would provide for a 60-day suspension of an individual's driver's license if the person's convicted two or more times passing a stopped school bus within a 10-year period. Our Assemblywoman, Eileen Gunter, has introduced a similar bill in the assembly. The assembly bill, even though it has broad bipartisan support across New York, has in the last prior few sessions died in the Transportation Committee of the Assembly, which, given the importance of the issue or the seriousness, it kind of doesn't make sense. I know the Middletown Transportation Committee, City Common Council Transportation Committee, will be considering a resolution urging the state legislature to move on and pass it. Maybe that's something that the school board might want to consider, urging the state legislature to pass the pending bills that will increase the penalties for passing a stopped school bus. Something that I've seen, and I know other parents here have seen, right on Highland Avenue. I did email at some point copies of the bill. I have the hard copies, I printed, and I'll give to the members to look at, and maybe at the next board meeting, the school board might want to consider a resolution to that effect.
Also, it will be discussed in the executive.
Yes. And again, it passed the state senate. It has broad support in the assembly and members of the cross-party lines, but for some, it tends to die in the Transportation Committee of the Assembly, and I think it's a noble endeavor that, to support, given that our state senate and our state Assemblywoman have been working on this for years, and benefits our children, something worth considering.
Seems worthwhile, Mr. Gomez. Thank you. Remember, our next meeting is September 19. That's a Tuesday, Tuesday, September 19. So, hope to see everyone there. Now, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
See, we had a lot on that. I think that was Mrs. Tobiasin and, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Tobiasin, why are you opposed?
I just want to hear you talk some more, John. Precise Mr. Estrada there.
Motion, motion passes. We're done.